If you come in as the actual open meeting act. If you would, I would ask you to stand with us for a moment of silence and as well the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Frankquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
I'm here.
Muren?
Here.
Mooney?
Here.
House?
Here.
File?
Here.
Well, good job. All right, I need or would ask for approval of the consent agenda as provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Your Honor, I'd like to ask that number fifteen be removed off of our consent agenda and be moved to the regular agenda, please.
Okay, very good. So with that change, do I have a motion to accept with the removal of item fifteen to be put on the regular agenda for discussion?
I'll make the motion with the exception number fifteen to be removed.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, approval of the full agenda with the addition of item fifteen to be added from the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda with the addition of item fifteen from the consent agenda. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. And with that, let's take that item number fifteen, consideration of a lease agreement with the Mennonite Disaster Service for rental of the city auditorium building at 127 North First Street. Would ask for consideration of.
I'll make the motion.
Second consideration.
Okay, we're motion with a second. Shane, are you going to tell us about this? Explain it.
Yes, Your Honor. The Mennonite Disaster Service has made requests to utilize the city auditorium office space for a landing spot for them. They're coming into town to build five homes for Pilger. They've been actually involved in the community ever since the tornado struck here in northeast Nebraska last summer. This group of folks, I met them, they're wonderful people. They travel throughout the United States to help in disaster recovery from all kinds of things, from tornadoes to hurricanes to floods. They've done some tremendous work and they're a tremendous organization. As they've been working through the process of trying to understand what kind of need is out there for Pilger, they came to realize that there's some families that don't have the resources to rebuild in Pilger and they really wanted to reach out to them and help them out and that's exactly what they're going to do. In that process, they were looking for a place to land to hang their hat. They looked Stanton and Wisner and Wayne and several communities throughout northeast Nebraska. And then they asked us whether we had a place for them potentially to kind of have a base of operations. And we looked at the auditorium again and then office space and toured it with them and showed them what it was all about and they loved it. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for the city of Norfolk to put our best foot forward and help out our sister cities here in northeast Nebraska and our residents that have been struck by this disaster. So they're going to be here with your approval. They'll be here very soon. February first, the first teams would start to arrive and they would start their work in Pilger and they're going to be staying in the office space of the auditorium. We're renting that space to them at a very reasonable rate for the utility cost. They'll be, for the most part, out of sight, out of mind in the auditorium. They're not going to be using the gym unless it's not being used. They might shoot some baskets and those kind of things, but they're going to be in the office space generally. They have a kitchen set up in the old city administrative office space there and then they're going to have some dorm style rooms in there with bunk beds and whatnot for the teams to come in. They're going to rotate teams in every few weeks, teams eighteen to twenty-four men to come in that are tradesmen, Mennonite tradesmen, Amish tradesmen that come into the community and work for a period of time and then rotate a new crew in and continue on the process. Their goal is to build those five houses within six months for sure and then see what else sparks, see what other needs possibly are needed in Pilger or throughout northeast Nebraska because of the tornadoes. So that's their initial goal. They've been greatly successful. I mean, you can Google them, you can talk to them in person, you can find out their history and you'll appreciate the efforts that this organization has made for many years in the United States, so.
Are they working with a local entity as well, Shane?
There's a committee of communities that has formed right after that has kind of been, when you say a local community, yes, there's a committee of communities. Wayne's involved, Stanton, Stanton County, Pilger, Wisner, of local leaders and some of the emergency response or emergency management agencies in Wayne County are involved as well and Stanton County. And they've been kind of meeting as a committee to try to get them started, Mayor.
Great, good. Okay. Well, I think it's a great, anytime anybody is willing to step up to the plate and take care of the issues of a community like that, that certainly has had their struggles, kudos. So I'm glad we can be of help to them and I don't think unless anyone has any questions or comments about it, I think certainly they seem to be very appreciative of the offer that was made to them and more than willing to pay that fair price. All we're really looking for is to be able to cover, like you said, the utilities and such, so I'm looking for.
We heat the building already and the office space doesn't have much electricity use. Obviously, they'll be using some electricity there, but you know, it's just, it's a token amount that keeps us right with the world and allows them into that space and they were very thankful for it.
Yeah. Any questions for Shane and all on that? Okay, if not, please vote.
All council members. All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and then looking at the regular agenda, we're looking for consideration of resolution number 2015-3, acknowledging and approving the future need for additional property tax in the amount of approximately $60,000 per year for a period of ten years to fund the amount that debt service on eight new hangars and related taxiway at Norfolk Regional Airport exceeds rent generated from eight new hangars. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Who's speaking to this here?
Randy, you want to? This is a continuation of the airport authority's request for them to build out a new hangar space, eight places. They've been in front of the council, this will be the third time now in making this request and trying to understand the economic development aspects of what a new hangar would do for the community and for the airport. And then their identified need that hangar space is short at the airport and they do have a list of folks that are out there that are looking for more hangar space. The authority has raised their hangar rates recently, as of January first, I think they had a 10% increase and they have continued over the next five years additional 10%. So they've done what the council's asked them to do as far as some of the history gathering what our sister cities have, our due charge in their airport rental fees. And I think they may have some more information tonight for the council to consider, so that being said, that's what they want to discuss.
That's where we are. So therefore?
Dan Gary is my name, chairman of the Norfolk Airport Authority from here in town. Just a couple of quick things and we kind of discussed this two weeks ago or whenever it was. I wish I could tell you that for each occupied hangar that we have at the airport, it gives you this much economic benefit in Norfolk, but without having an extensive study done by somebody, that's hard for us to do. He's going to speak on the money that a pilot spends and what it takes to have a license, that kind of stuff. But just to touch on a couple of things we had last time, the federal money is authorized for this year and it's not authorized by Congress again. So if we don't build now and use this federal money, it may or may not be reauthorized. And then the hangar money that's available now has been set aside for us. If we use it, we can have it. If we were to delay a year or two or whatever, somebody else might have the money. I mean, it's a revolving fund and as people pay for their hangars, it grows and then they have money available in this hangar fund. It's available now, we don't know when it might be available later or if it would be. So with that, I'll let him speak and then if we've got any questions, right?
I won't.
My name's Bill Jepson. I'm a member of the Airport Authority and also one of the local pilots and also one of the commercial pilots that work here in our lovely city. Dan, we've talked about, you know, requests for hangars. We've had lots of inquiries from people, not everyone wants to give their name because there's a lot of development and confidentiality they want to keep. There's businesses that are calling and I want to look at a business in Norfolk, if I bring my plane, do you have a place for it? Well, kind of, sort of, we have some big hangars, but we're getting more limited every day by the amount of people that are calling and asking. We've had three businesses in the last seven months that have called and asked or required about a business aircraft. From a pilot's standpoint, to get your private pilot's license, you're looking at about $6,000. One thing we used to have here and we don't anymore is a rental aircraft and we're actually getting back into that. When Jim Coates was here a number of years ago and he was running the FBO, he had a couple of airplanes for rent and people were using them all the time. When he went away, those airplanes went away. We don't have, how do I phrase this properly? I'm not used to talking in front of a big group of people like this.
Well, I tell you what, we understand though, so please just.
I'm just a little nervous.
No.
The way it kind of works is I bought in with a couple of guys, which we do because no one can normally afford an airplane on their own unless they win the lottery and independently wealthy. So typically it's one or two guys or if it's a single guy, he's got a smaller aircraft. Most of the general aviation aircraft out there are not that expensive. You can get anywhere, they're under $100,000, most of them. Some of the airplanes out there, we pay more for our cars on a daily basis. But they're still subject to FAA inspections and they're still flyable, they're still We purchased this airplane, we started flying it. Other people saw us having an airplane, hey, that was kind of a cool thing, how do you get involved in that? Well, we start talking to people and we've got a couple of flight instructors, one of them works at the Airport Services, Blake, and then Rich Clausen, there's a couple of other guys that teach here. They come out, they take these guys up, they borrow our airplane, basically they rent our airplane and they take these guys up and start working toward their licenses. Well, a couple of guys already have got so involved in that, well, I like this, but I want my own airplane. So in the hangar that we're in right now, which used to be the old Lifenet hangar, there's four airplanes. When we first started, there was two. So that's 100% increase in the number of aircraft we can put in there. The problem is, all these guys want to get an airplane, but they want to keep it hangard and we don't have the space for it. The other problem we have is using these bigger hangars that we have for these smaller planes, even though there's multiples in there, is the fact that the larger corporations that come up here, we have Menards that comes up, we have ShopCo that comes up here, Target, the railroad flies up here quite a bit. The different air ambulances, not just us, when we used to not have fuel, we would go over to the airport and buy fuel at the airport. We would do our maintenance, we have our own facility, but the fixed wings that come in, the other services other than us that come in, they're buying fuel at the airport. There's just no, if they have a problem, there's no place to put them. These bigger jets, if they come in overnight, I've seen Hawker and expensive jets sitting on the ramp all night because we don't have a place to put them. Whereas if we get the hangars built, then we can get some of the smaller aircraft out there. Also, if you're an aircraft owner, it doesn't really help the city, but the county gets a benefit, you charge personal property tax. All the fuel you buy, everyone buys it here, oil, our restaurants generated quite a bit of use, there's lots of people coming out here that fly into Norfolk, they'll go to the restaurant and, hey, let's go into town, what's going on? They borrow the courtesy car quite often, they come into town, they go to the different places and shop. Let's see, what else did I have on here?
Bill, when you talk about the Targets and the railroads and such that come in for, maybe it's two days or whatever, what kind of rent are you able to acquire from that being sheltered for those two days or four days or whatever?
Some of it, it depends on the aircraft and I can't quote you the big numbers for that.
Approximately though, you know, on a?
To hangar one of those big, larger business, just a couple hundred bucks a night is out of the realm of possibility.
According to, we charge according to the size of the aircraft, but it can be like, say, Menards wanted to put away for a night, they could be like $700 a night.
Really? Okay.
Anywhere from like 200 on up?
Okay.
I think the highest we've ever charged is 900.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Oh, that's fine, my train of thought, just call off of the airport, so. Back to the getting your pilot's license. When you're flying an aircraft, when you're renting an aircraft, there's inspections that you have to do. If you're just an aircraft owner and you're just flying it for personal pleasure or even for business, there's an annual inspection that just inspection itself starts about 1,500 bucks. We're lucky enough to have enough traffic here that we have people working on the airport that do these inspections and it goes along with the egg guys too because they have a lot of airplanes and, you know, one hand kind of feeds the other. But it's 1,500 bucks just to do the annual. And then if they find anything wrong, then it's more money to replace and get the parts and repair. So that's kind of gearing it, if you're renting an airplane out, then you have a hundred-hour inspection, so every hundred hours that aircraft also has to be inspected. It's for safety issues, which is not a bad thing, but it also generates a little bit of revenue.
Could our Airport Authority, you know, you talked about the fact that at one time we had rentals here. Is that something that's considered, has been considered?
Yeah, we considered, we worked on that like maybe eighteen months ago at one, back and forth, back and forth, with legal counsel and the liability of the city owning the, since we operate the FBO, it would be, the liability would be way too great. But that has been considered, we wanted to buy an aircraft and it was basically shot down because of that reason.
What would the overnight rental be on one of these hangars if it were built? How much would you charge?
Well, it depends on the size of the aircraft. We go anywhere from a small, single engine that you can move by hand at 40 bucks a night. Any one of the, I think our highest rate is $900, which isn't really common, but probably an average rate for like say a Bonanza Hawk or something that comes in is probably $200 a night. But we don't, we hope that we have them, that we will get them filled up and then I'll leave our bigger hangars for those transient airplanes, aircraft that come in.
Then would you, are you looking, on these eight hangars, would all of these be for business aircraft or would they be for private rental?
Well, I think it's.
For folks that own their own planes.
Whoever wants to rent them.
But it's a single, a single?
Right, it's a single.
Right, I see, okay.
But it will hold a bigger aircraft than our, the T-hangers that we have now because they're making them bigger.
Okay. But what your idea is, the fact that it's going to free up those larger ones where you're right now putting two to four in. I get it, okay.
And there's also the newer hangars with the construction of them, like she said, they are a little bit bigger, they're insulated versus a lot of the stuff we've got, the 1965 new ones, they're just basically tin sheds. They're just metal, they're just keeping the sun and rain off.
They're pole bars.
Without the poles. So you would look at these, would, not exactly sure how to phrase this, would they be hangars for private owners? Private or business?
For anybody.
Okay.
Whoever.
So if a private individual that owned an airplane called you up and the hangar was built, said I want to rent a hangar for a year, you'd give them a price on the hangar?
Right.
Okay. Or if a business calls up and says, what have you got that'll fit this size airplane? If we've got one of those, you know, you can have this option or you can have a bigger option. Okay. Would one of these hangars, these new hangars, would they be able to accommodate one of those bigger ones like from Walmart then?
Like Target?
Or Target?
They're not big enough for that.
Okay, so if somebody, they want to come, then you've got to chase out four individuals out of your bigger ones to accommodate them?
Those individuals will be in the smaller hangars then.
Yeah, the idea is to.
To have, where these four are now, to have that freed up, you know, put the larger aircraft.
Are these theoretically four other people, are they willing to go into the newer hangars and?
Yeah, I actually have, there's four individuals now that would like those new hangars and that would free up some of the smaller hangars for like to stay aside for people who want to come in. Or business and then we still have the four to work with. I mean, I can't tell you today that the rent that it's looking at.
One of the biggest obstacles that we run into is the people out, the city of Norfolk people are saying, you're going to give them $60,000, you know, what do we get for that? And we say, you know, you get economic development. If you put, if you fill those eight, do you have any expectations on how much that generates for money, for rent?
Probably about, I'd say 20,000 a year. And that's the rent, that is on an, that is on an average rate of the highest hangar that we have per square foot right now. But I think, I feel that they'll generate more than that because some of these units, there's three different size units there. There's four of them, okay, they're nested, so that leaves the ones on the end and they're a little bigger and we're not going to portion those off for like a type of story. Whoever has those end ones is going to pay more because they have more room. I mean, it's hard for me to say, I would.
Yeah. I guess what I'm getting at is if we could tell the people, is that money then going to go towards the 60,000 or do you have a special use for that or so when people ask, I can say this is what they're going to do with it?
It's all going back to the hangar, the hangar hangar.
Into the.
Yeah. And then in 10 years, when that's done, any rent after that will generate revenue.
So fund yourself, yes.
Right. And those hangars will last way longer than 10 years.
So now, I guess to Randy or Shane, if they, let's just say theoretically give us 20,000, then do we only have to come up with 40 or are we locking into 60?
I think they presented that last meeting, they presented some of the numbers there and you know, go over them again.
Yeah, we already did that, so.
We want to hear you, Dan.
We already did that, so we have the projected. Oh, that's right, it was on there. Hangar flow now, so if the new hangars sat empty for the year, then we would need 80. Yeah, I remember now. So we already put that into the cash flow and it was 60. Yep, I'm sorry, I forgot that was on that.
Any other questions? Clint did, why don't you go ahead and explain? Terry responded to us, but in order.
When you were talking about, excuse me, when Terry was talking about the airport buying the plane and leasing it out or giving lessons or whatever, the difficulty were, and we looked all over the place with Silverstone and all the folks that we could think of or be referred to for insurance. If my recollection serves me correct, the Airport Authority couldn't buy more than $300,000 of liability insurance on that plane. So when you had the, with the political subdivision toward claim act, there was a humongous amount of potential for loss or liability there that you simply couldn't insure it for. I mean, under the political subdivision toward claim act, there was liability up to $5 million that the Airport Authority would have potentially had if they owned that as part of the, as part of the FBO. And you could only buy insurance for 300,000 of it.
Do other cities like Carney, Grand Island have planes or how, what do they do or?
They have rental aircraft, but they are privately owned FBOs.
So the Airport Authority and those other places do not have it, but there is one available on the airport that's a private.
But not owned by the, yeah.
The other thing, since the mayor said I could talk, is when you look at the resolution itself, when you look at the resolution, Dave, the 60,000 is an approximate amount and what we're trying to do with that language, it's kind of ugly there because what we're saying is that that's the debt service that is anticipated on the eight new hangars with the rent from those eight new hangars going to retire that. All of the rest of the hangars that are already out there being rented is already going to defray the operating costs of the airport. So we're distinguishing those two in the resolution the way it's written, which was relevant.
One question about that though, would, you know, with, if, say they don't lease the hangars, then we're out, we have to come up with another 20,000, but if you go back to your budget, you have 111,000 beginning balance. Would there be enough funds there to cover that while they're, say they have to wait a year to lease of that 111? Could you swing the 20,000 so we wouldn't have to come back to, so we would just be asking for the 60 altogether in our, so we can take out some of that language? Is that a possibility? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, we have some cushion in our budget to handle that, so that's not a problem. And I, maybe I don't understand this correctly, but I don't think we come back and ask you for the 60,000 every year. It'll just, it'll just be built into our budget when we present our budget, so what we're trying to tell you here.
But the budget's built in with the 20,000 income off the new hangars.
Right.
Correct. If that didn't happen, if some, they didn't lease, then you're out 20,000. Where's that, where do those funds come from? Are they, is it going to be, are you going to be requesting additional funds or are we going to have enough cushion in your budget to cover those funds? I guess that's where I'm kind of getting at.
Well, there's some cushion in the budget, we just take it out of the manager's salary.
You're a willing partner there, Terry.
I think, I think, Councilman Clausen, the answer to that question is that the resolution, which is on the agenda tonight, is 2015-3 talks about this, relax about the basic understanding and expectation that building the hangars is going to need some additional monies for debt service and there's this understanding that those are going to be provided. Notwithstanding that, you'll still do the same thing between the Airport Authority and the city that you do all the time since the late 1990s when the Airport Authority has to come to the city and say, this is what we want to do and you go ahead and provide budget authority. So this is the same kind of a thing here because of the, that if, in the past, if the Airport Authority would have built something or financed something using bonds, bond council requires that this body, the city council, says, passes a resolution that says, we're going to agree to give money, enough money to the Airport Authority until these bonds are required, so they've got money to pay off the bonds, okay? There are no bonds here because of the, because of the grant from the feds to the extent that the only, the only part of the Fed grant, Jerome and Dan and everybody here will correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing that's present here is that you've got a 90% grant from the feds for the taxiway.
Correct.
So the other 10% of that is being financed and then the other portion that's being financed would be the 10 years on paying back the state with the interest-free portion of that. So there really is no, there is no bonding going on and so this resolution kind of takes the place of the resolution that you would have had had it been bonded where there's this understanding that going forward, you know that each of those budgets that's going to come forward and the 10 years after this is built would contain some component of needing to pay back the interest-free loan from the state. That's what this is really saying.
Sure, and I'm kind of driving that though when we do go through the budget process with them a year from now and there's 111,000 beginning balance and we have some overages, you know, and we approve the budget and we approve the spending, obviously, because we're looking at their budgets. Is there enough cushion there to cover some of these overages or are we going to have to look at another option down the line? Or is your, is the budget for the Airport Authority is set such that they can't go below a certain amount of dollars in their beginning balance for each fiscal? You see what I'm saying? So if they can't go below the beginning balance for each fiscal and we have a hiccup, then we're going to be sitting here a year from now going, where do we come up with additional funding? That's, so that's kind of where I'm driving at.
It's really, it really becomes, much like it would in any other division of the city, becomes a triice situation with your budget. You know, what I think the councilman's asking is, are you, could you be prepared in your capital budget or your personnel budget or a combination thereof to remedy a $20,000 shortfall if the lease arrangement wasn't realized in your new hangar is really what you're asking. You'll have that chance every single time when you come through the budget process, you'd then have that time.
Yeah.
to ask that op, that opportunity during the budget in June. Airport authority would have the opportunity to explain that to you. But at the end of the day, the resolution that you're committing to tonight, or not, is for the dollars to fund, fund their proposal.
Understand that, but you know, you just got to look down the, we're asking our, Mr. Faust, or Councilman Faust brought it up. You know, you're asking your, you're asking the taxpayer to come up with, I think it's what, $4.60 per 100,000? Does that sound about right? Is that what you're saying, Jerome? So when, in doing so, you know, you just want to make sure you're covering all your bases.
Sure.
So you're saying that aviation went down to two and all the hangars sat there empty for five years or whatever, could, would we be able to handle that?
Or if your, your budget increases because you've got more maintenance with additional buildings, additional, you know, you just, and, and I don't know your bylaws, do your bylaws state that you can't dip down below 100,000 beginning balance? So you have only 11,000, you know? Okay.
We have submitted a budget in the past, and I think we only had a projected $30,000 balance at the end of the year on a projected basis. I don't think we've ever gotten that low.
Okay. Okay, well that answers.
There's a little flex there, and of course, our budget is the same as yours. We don't know how much to put in for snow removal, and we don't know how many air conditioning units will break, or all that kind of stuff. So you have to pick a number, and, and there's some in there, so I think that's okay. Well, that's true. And, uh, you know, the way we used to do this years ago, and Jerome, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we used to just let our hanger money, um, build.
Put in a separate fund.
Build up, and, uh, um, you know, it was, I don't know how many years ago, 10 or 15 years ago, figured out that we had this money in our budget, and, uh, when, when, when we, instead of having our state, state taxing authority of our own, and we come to you, why, it was, and Gary Miller had quite a bit to do with this, but it was pretty well said that, hey, we want, we want to give you a bare bones budget. We don't want this to be building up in your account. If you want money, you, uh, borrow it from us, or whatever. So, you know, we don't, we don't build up in our, in our budget, um, cash reserves like we used to. Because I remember one time, we had 800,000 or something, we used, we used to just pay cash for these hangars.
We'd be coming to you.
No, good old days.
Well, now we don't, we, you know, we take our hanger income money and put it to general expenses. Then we, and then we don't have the money to buy a new hanger, or-
It wasn't, uh, long ago you all raised your hanger rates?
Yep.
Based on a study you did of how many airports?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight other airports.
And have you, have you-
That would be comparable to light ones.
Have you looked at any more airports other than those eight in the last couple of months?
No.
So no, we had, we had submitted a list of 300 and some odd airports.
I looked at the list, and out of those, I looked in Nebraska, and there was, I thought we'd already done.
There's seven similar airports in Nebraska, when you classify it as a regional airport. Everything else is either bigger or smaller. So we just took the ones that were listed as regional airports. The other ones are, are public use, or just what they call general aviation airports.
But I think, did they not have the same employee size?
No.
No?
Depending on, the ones that I found, it was Norfolk, Grand Island, Carney, McCook, North Platte, Scotts Bluff, and Ainsworth. All of those at one time were like us, had a commuter airline coming in. Grand Island's just got it back, and I think it goes into Carney deep now. But Ainsworth, uh, Scotts Bluff, and McCook, they've suffered a decrease in the number of aircraft that are, and, you know, number of operations that are going there. We're lucky enough and fortunate that ours keep going, going up. We keep getting more aircraft coming in here. That's because, A, Norfolk's a good town, B, we've got a great airport. We've got two instrument runways, a mile long. That's why Life Net came here, because we had fuel, we had instrument approaches to the runway, we had a hospital. We had, there was a lot of different things as a business that they wanted to have. Plus it helped us reach out farther to the state. And we've got all the bigger businesses we've got here, New Core, Norfolk Continental, all those. The airport is another gateway to the city that not everyone sees, but it really does impact what goes on. There's people, my wife's on Facebook a lot, I'm not on very much, but anyway. She saw an article, somebody put in there that, well, I've never used the airport in 50 years, you know, it's just, it's just sitting there. Well, she would have a great rebuttal of that. You have used the airport. UPS brings your packages in, FedEx is bringing packages in, they fly in medications in here. Once again, the area, I'm going to say, that's just because that's my job, that's why I focus on that, but.
A lot of doctors coming in.
Yeah, there's a lot of doctors that fly in, the faith regional that come up from Omaha, or Sioux City, or Sioux Falls. They fly in there, they park their planes here for a day. Sometimes they want to stay over, and once again, looking for a place to put them up, because they don't have the room right now. So there's lots of different things that contribute that not everybody always quite sees underneath. And you start looking at, at the fuel these guys buy, and the oil, okay, they break, then we got the mechanic right there, he can fix it.
So of these 317 airports that were on that list, who, who looked through the list?
I didn't. They were, they were all in the United States. There was only about, I don't know.
Well, they were in Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, South Dakota? No Michigan?
There wasn't a Michigan on there.
No?
It was all over the United States.
No, the list actually was comprised of, of the same, same number of employees. Within, what I tried to do was look at within our geographical reach here in the Midwest. So I didn't know who had perused through that list, or, um, who might have made a few calls to find out whether the hanger rates are comparable to airports of our size in other states.
Well, I'm going to reveal on this question. Shane sent me that list. I was here at the council meeting Monday night, a week, two weeks from Monday night, next morning Monday night, I was gone the rest of the week. So I didn't-
Certainly my sympathies. Is it a fair statement, the, the proposed hangars are for, for privately owned aircraft as well as corporately owned aircraft?
Yes.
Is it a fair statement that we're asking the taxpayers to subsidize privately owned hangars?
Well-
With their tax dollars?
Basically, but here, here's, here's the deal, if we, um, were you here two weeks ago?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, in our sheet, we show, we show what our hanger income is. Okay, so if we didn't have any hangars, no hangars at the airport at all, okay? We would be asking you for $80,000 and more, our budget would just be that much higher because we don't have any hanger income. We take our hanger income and we put it towards our expenses, okay? So then we're able to come and ask you for $80,000 less money. But our hangars wear out, wear out, wear out, and, and after a while, you, those, so if we don't invest back in hangars again, then we don't have any hangars.
But aren't we actually asking the taxpayer to invest back into the hangars that are owned, that are rented by private citizens?
Well, what I'm asking you is, is to be able to take the rent, the hanger income that we have off of our hangars that are paid for, and use it for hangars. But then when I use that for hangars, then I don't have the money for my general budget anymore. So, so it makes our general budget go up, but we have paid for hangars that would, that would, that pays for all of this. But if we take the hanger income that we have, um, that we had, that, we had that sheet two weeks ago. We, we bring in
70,000.
70,000 dollars per year off of our hangars that we do have, that are paid for, that have been, that have been purchased in similar situations like that. Okay, they're paid for. So the 70,000 comes in, put in our general fund, and then we don't have to ask you for, for the 70,000.
For operating.
Yeah. Like I said, we used, we used to just let that hanger thing build, and then when we got enough cash, we'd just go build another hanger. But, but then we got looked at as, well, hey,
The roles change.
You don't, you don't need to have that much money hanging in your, setting in your account. You don't need to be, be building that much money. So now we have to come and ask you for it every time we do a capital investment.
Any other questions or comments, or?
With that last statement, I mean, there's some things you're saying that are kind of answering the question of what, what's this due for the tax base? And you stopped, you talked about UPS, medical supplies being floating, that's, that's important that that gets out there so people understand exactly what the airport's utilized for. Uh, the other statement you made just recently, just to Rob here, was about, so if I, if I'm getting this right, if we don't invest in hangars using these grants and funds, there could be a budget shortfall in 10 years after they're paid for?
Say nothing-
Well, if you've got, you take, you take, just any simple buzz, budget, you have 3% to 4% inflation on your budget per year, or 3% to 4% increase each year. If the budget, if the investment isn't made in the hangars now, using the subs, the subsidy or the grant, is there a potential that 10 years down the road, once the hangars are paid for, you could have a budget, you could be, have a shortfall then? You know, after this, after this-
We wouldn't have a shortfall as soon as we have the hangars paid for.
I know, I'm saying if we don't approve the hangars.
Oh. Well, yeah, the hangars are going to wear out, are wearing out, and we, we-
So the, so, so the, the investment in the hangars is basically an investment in your budget? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes.
So I guess, so the need for the hangars, was that a need that, you know, you just sought because there was such high demand? Or was it a need, was it, or was it grant driven? You know, did the grant come available and then it was, hey, we need it, we, or was it, we went and sought the grant because we need the hangars?
We continuously get calls. And then when you watch economic conditions, that, hey, then, there's hanger money available in that fund, and there's, and we've got our federal grant money available, I wonder if we could put, put it together and make this happen? And we did that, we did that, and we just got, we got approval of it. Oh, no, we got, we got spoken for, the, the hanger funds got granted to us if we wanted them just shortly before we came with our budget. So then we hurried in with our budget with it in there, and then you asked us a whole bunch of questions that we didn't, we weren't really prepared for at the time. So I didn't feel like we answered your questions very well.
How many people have you had turn away in the last year?
Um, there's, in the last, well, we weren't keeping track, it means up to about three months, so in the last three months, there were seven people that we couldn't accommodate. And I can't say that they'll jump right in these hangars because they're not going to wait while these all the hanger, they, they're doing something else.
But consistently over the last 12 months, you've had requests that you couldn't accommodate?
And this is one of those, it's just, it's a prime opportunity, I mean, it's free federal money. And they're feeding the pot to us, and if we can jump on it, I mean, if we don't, if we don't get on this now and, and start building them, when we get farther down the road and really, really, really need it, if we want, keep having interest in the airport, then we're going to have to fund it all out of our own pocket. Let's use their money. Better for us all over.
And refresh us again, Bill, what, how much is their money available?
The 90% of the federal money for the taxiway. So that's, he's got-
There's 200, uh, there's 267,471 dollars of federal money. Now, that's a grant, that's grant money, we don't have to pay that back. Okay, and then there's 491,966 dollars of hanger money.
Six or 700 dollars, man?
Yeah. Yes, 7, right, 750 is available.
Of your existing hangars that, that are out there now, are, do all of them house operating aircraft?
Yes.
So every, every plane that's out there is, is-
There's a couple of them that aren't operating right now, and it's basically, one person I know for sure old enough, he's, he's old, he doesn't fly anymore, he's not very likely to hold his plane, but that's, I mean,
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all-
Federal regulations require that if you have an airport hanger, now, and, and they're evolving even more, they used to not, the word used to be, you got to have an airport, or an airplane in an aircraft hanger. And there were people that were kind of just getting, well, okay, I've got an airplane wing, so I can park my truck in here and work for my truck.
Yeah.
They're getting away from that with all the 9/11 and all the security stuff, they're working away from it.
And we get, we get tougher and tougher on that ourselves, because, you know, if we got a legitimate business that wants one, and we got somebody that's not utilizing their aircraft, uh, we, we, I don't like to say we give them eviction notice, but, but yeah, we get, we do inspections on hangars and everything else to make sure that, hey, you've got a plane in there and you're, you're using this for airport purposes.
It's not getting used improperly.
I think there's some strings attached to this hanger money that we can't, I mean, it has to be used.
They can't load it out for storage.
No, no, it has to have an aircraft in it.
Terry, of your seven requests, I guess, that you had, were those monthly, yearly, weekly? What was their request that they wanted? And then my second-
Well, to be, to be here, like permanently, they probably do their lease.
Those are the seven that you're counting as permanent ones, not people that just wanted an overnight stay?
No, 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 we don't.
Overnights.
Oh, I don't think we keep track of that, um, no.
And then how long is your lease for? Is it yearly, is it?
One year.
Okay.
Clint, did you have something you wanted to?
One, one of the things, as we advance our education about airports, which I think is kind of interesting, is that, Dan, when you're talking about the 90%, that's not as, as good a deal for the airport authority as it was, what, about five years ago? Uh, five years ago, the feds put in 95% of the money for those sorts of projects, the taxiway. And the state kicked in another 2%, another 3%, so the, so the local, the, the local money, which is now 10%, was 2% five years ago. So, you know, that's something that's changing too, in a, in a way that's not real beneficial for, um, for the local airport authority. But it's, you know, it, it is what's happening.
Other questions or comments or concern?
I could address Mr. Clausen, he made a, uh-
Jerome, come up, will you? We'd like to have you recorded, we don't get you here very often, so.
I'm Jerome Bam, the airport accountant, and Mr. Clausen indicated that, uh, if you people come in and ask for another 3% increase in your budget every year, I, I want to note that the last five years until this last year, we did not ask for any increase in money. We were told that we could increase it this year by 3.5% and, and with meetings with Randy and, and with Shane, that the valuation was going to jump at least 3.5%, and it went up a little over 4. So this is, this last fiscal year is the first year we've had an increase in the last six years on our dollar amount requested in the budget.
I was basically indicating what could happen in the next 10 years. But that, that, thank you for that, that's, that's a steady budget that shows that it's, you're not having many increases over there. But if you're projecting out 10 years from now, where could you be? I was just throwing-
What's the valuation going to be 10 years from now?
Exactly, exactly, yeah, you don't know, so.
We always encourage the airport authority to put together a budget very similar to what the other divisions had, heads do for all the operating divisions within the city, so that's, that's where we've been driving. You know, and our goal has been to have a similar budget scenario, so you'll see the different percentages coming through with the airport authority's budget moving forward is our goal.
Basically, we try to work hand in glove with you folks.
Well, you know what, we're going to work on that continuously now, guys. I think it's very important that, that you stay
Thank you.
in front of us, you know, more than just once a year, so we'll invite you quite often.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, folks?
So to, to clarify though, the, what I was seeing, the 267, 471, 90, that's the federal grant money? And the, uh, 491 is the 70% um, uh, no interest loan. But
Yeah.
It, it was said that we were given, being given this federal money, we're not being given, I mean, the 491, we're paying back.
491, we're paying back.
Right.
Right, but we're not having the interest.
I, I know that, but it, it, the way it was stated was that we were being given this federal money. But that's, the, the money that we're getting that we aren't paying back is the 267. And the only other question that I have then too, of the properties out at the airport, the facilities, all the buildings and that, they're, with the exception of one, they're all owned by the airport? Correct or not?
Uh, well, actually, there's three of them.
Or I shouldn't say by the airport, by the city. Because we actually own the buildings, do we not? We own the physical property?
Yes, Council.
Right, right, so there's three private factors on there, owned by three individuals. Right, right, so there's three private factors on there, owned by three individuals that leased land from us.
Okay, I was only aware of one, so.
Norfolk Iron and Metal, and then, um, Dr. Schroeder owns one hanger, and Dinklage, Otto Wizner owns one.
Okay, so are, are we, I mean, because I believe the last private one that's gotten built out there is Norfolk Iron and Metals, and that's-
Well, these are, the other ones are, they were built, I mean, they're old.
Yeah, so, do we encourage that too, when we have others, corporations coming in and looking at a long-time stay situation here?
Yeah, we have lots, we have lots plotted out there, and if you wanna, if you want to pay the land lease and build your own hanger, yes.
Okay, because that was not my understanding of the situation at meetings I attended probably seven, eight years ago.
I don't know, I mean, I don't re, I don't recall that, I-
But anyway, I, I would hope that that's always the case, would be-
Okay.
No, that's, that's mine.
Did that, did that have to do with crop spraying?
No.
Okay.
Happened to do with one of your board members at the time, told me that, so.
Oh, but maybe he want, he wanted to buy the G-three hanger, I think.
No, he wanted to build a hanger.
He wanted to build a hanger.
Anyway, I, I would hope that we are sincere about encouraging, you know, especially corporations, you know, if Nucor decides that they wanna seat a plane in here, I would hope, you know, I would hope that we wouldn't have to, that they wouldn't have to be the size of, of a Norfolk Iron and Metal or a Nucor before we would, we would be receptive to their offers to build their own hangars.
Those buildings have to be projected on the airport layout, and we have different areas depicted where hangars could be built, whether there are or somebody, somebody else built them, I mean, though, that's definitely an option.
I guess obviously, the airport's an important part of the community, you know, and, and, it's just the fact that you gotta try to, the investment we're asking, you know, from our, from the tax base, what's it gonna do for them? That's the bottom line. What is it gonna benefit them? And I guess, you know, we do, we're in charge of economic development now, basically, and I know Courtney's not here tonight, uh, that was one question, kinda, Shane may want to direct it to you, is when you do get an industry in, you know, we're trying to take them around and show them how great and wonderful Norfolk is, and we're trying to recruit them here, is that an important part of it? The airport, having the airport in our community, and what our airport does for the, I mean-
Well, it's invaluable, absolutely important part, it's a gateway to the community, you know, that first, that first impression of the community really starts at the airport when you have corporate members that are looking, seeking expansion in other communities, that's oftentimes where they show up, they'll fly into your airport, and that'll be their first, their first impression of your community, so, the investments that we make in our commu, in our airport, just like our community, to keep it shiny, looking good, crisp, clean, is, uh, is invaluable. So, the airport does a good job of doing, doing that, as far as keeping it looking good and, and crisp and clean, and welcoming those citizens in our community so they potentially, and those corporations so they can potentially expand here. So, absolutely, it's an economic development tool, uh, you know, we have to have, uh, we have to have a well-run airport, we have to have fiscal responsibility in that, which is part of being a well-run airport, and we have to have our best foot forward when we, when we put resources there into, into, like any other division that we, we provide for the community.
Actually, heading up, excuse me, heading out west of town, all the developments that's come up there within the last, maybe fifteen years, there's Chalko and Walmart, Ivy, of course, they've been here for quite a while, Menards and Target, and I think, my own personal theory is those companies might not be here, we didn't have this, the combination, the combinations we have at our airport, because Heart comes in here a lot, and so do, so do other companies, but I think it played a part in some of those businesses coming to town, they could fly, Norfolk could fly in here and have their meetings in the day and night.
I, I guess I would just add, I don't think we can underestimate the importance of direct access, um, as we all know, we're not the easiest location to get to, um, so I think that, uh, the airport does provide a lot of benefit, probably unseen benefit to economic development.
You know, we, we as a public sometimes, when we're going with this, is, I've been, I've driven by the airport all the time, because I'm up there, I've seen more airplanes out on the ramp than cars in the parking lot, especially in the summertime, Saturdays and Sundays, you go out there, there's all kinds of people that are flying into town to go to barnstorms, to come into town and go shop. There's just, there's more airplanes out there than your cars parked around the airport, so, it's a good thing.
Well, you've made a certainly educated, at least myself, and I think I can speak for probably most of this council sitting here, we've learned a lot in the last month and a half, I think. I appreciate your being here tonight, I think you've answered the questions that we've asked. Everyone comfortable with that? I don't-
I just have one more, sorry.
Sure.
It, it has to do with the hang, once the hangars are completed and they're paid for, what was the rent potential off those, I mean, as of today?
Well, it's estimated as eighteen thousand, two-hundred a year.
Okay, yeah, that's right, that's on the-
Right.
Well, that's, that's the first year, so we've got, we've got two percent built in each year after that, so, eighteen, two-hundred was the annual, annual projection, the citizens are built.
Just for the seven, or eight?
Right, only that one, yeah, added to the ninety, or added to the eighty, eighty-something that the others bring in, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Add one extra, extra que, one other question too, uh, already, I'm sorry. As you look forward as a board, Dan, I'll ask you and Terry, um, do you anticipate the reviewing your hanger rental fees? You know, oftentimes in city, in city government, we, we review those fees that we charge the folks to keep our, keep our city running, and the airport's no different than that, just another branch of the city government. Do you have a, you'll be reviewing that, uh, at a-
Well, seeing we, when we did this, we, we, we built in the two percent a year, or whatever it is every year, so, so we don't forget, so, I mean, you know, it's automatically gonna happen, we, 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 we know, you know, because we went for a while without increasing the rent.
It's nice to take a composite look at, not only your sister cities in the state of Nebraska, but when you reach out to the Midwest, to comparable cities in Iowa and, and South Dakota, and, you know, our sister states, it's good to look at those, at those rates too, just to see where you at, it's a good lit, litmus test for you.
And I will look into some more on that list, of, of the airports that you sent out, in the, in the region, the regional airports, I will dive into that, one of these, one of these things.
If, if there, if there were no monies available, and you still wanted to try to float this amount, what would the increase in current hanger rates have to be to make this thing a positive cash flow?
Well, the, the, the hanger rent, oh, okay, if you just, if you just put it on the hangars, um, the hanger rental income for, with the ten percent increase, we're gonna have eighty-five thousand, um, six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars come in on the, so, so, we'd have to write that down, so eighty-five plus the twenty-two we're coming in.
So you haven't, you haven't necessarily looked at that, I'm assuming?
Well, so that, so that would be a total income of eight, uh, a hundred-and-seven-thousand.
We went.
So we would have to raise the rents from, and we'd have to add sixty, sixty thousand onto that, so, so our rent, hanger rents would have to be a hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, to float this, um, so, so from a hundred-and-seven up to a hundred-and-sixty-seven, if you wanna just do the math.
Sixty percent increase.
I'm sorry, what, Jerome?
Sixty percent increase.
Okay, and, so in looking at the dollar amounts that you needed, which I kinda go back to this three-hundred-and-seventeen other airports and what they charge, did, did you ever take a look at, uh, if you raised your rates as opposed to ten percent, if you raised them twenty-five percent, how much money would you need? If you raised them thirty-five percent, how much money would you need? And if you raised them thirty-five percent, would you be on par with some of the other cities that have the same size airports in those states that I mentioned? So how do we know, uh, where you're actually sitting at compared to airports of other sizes, same sizes in, in other close by states?
Yeah, okay. We didn't do that.
I know.
And, 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 and we could, okay. And one of the things that we do do is, we have to set fuel prices. Okay, we could set the fuel price up, way up here, so that we could, um, pay for our hangars out of our fuel price, except we probably wouldn't sell any fuel, so, so we play, we were constantly playing with the numbers on fuel, uh, we, we deduct the price of fuel, and we get people flying in here for fuel, or stop over on long hauls and all that kinda stuff, so, so we've studied the price of fuel and run it up and down, and we're, we're, we're pretty much cheaper than, um, a lot of places around.
Very much so.
So we've got a reasonable, a very reasonable price on gas. We do, we're doing that for, we're getting way more traffic in here, and-
Well, it would appear to me that you have a, a very reasonable price on gas, and it brings you more traffic, but you also have a really cheap price on hanger rates, and all your hangars are full. But are your hangars full because they're, they're cheap, or are they, are they-
I don't think we have really cheap hanger rent.
How do you know?
Well, from the airports that we've studied just here in Nebraska-
Those eight other airports?
Yeah. That's the, that's the one, the airports of, of size around here where people-
What is, what is the rate of increase we're proposing for the hangars?
They did-
Well, we increased it two percent, and then proposed two percent a year for five years, being a minimum two percent.
Minimum two percent.
So that, that ten percent increase on a standard hanger out there is what, eight dollars a month?
If that's five dollars.
About eight bucks.
Well, it depends on what type of hanger you're talking about.
I understand.
You're talking about the ones that are just, that are unheated, that have, all they are is, is metal walls, we're getting more for the ones that are bigger, that are insulated.
And you should.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's so hard to, it's apples and oranges, constantly trying to juggle.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then you look at heat, you know, South Dakota, North Dakota, obviously, they're gonna be a lot more, because it's a lot colder up there.
Well, they have a heated hanger, yeah.
Yeah, if they do.
Yeah.
I got one more question on the eighteen thousand, two-hundred, is that taking into account what maintenance or, I guess, whatever other things you have to do as part of your budget, if you get eight more hangars? You understand what I mean? Is that just profit, or is that, that's total?
Change in life, just snowing on a-
Anything, yeah. Maybe somebody runs into some, whatever it might be.
Well, if somebody runs into something, that's probably-
Well, whatever maintenance or whatever you might have, is that eighteen, two-hundred, eighteen thousand, two-hundred clear, or is that before any possible maintenances you would have if this got approved?
Um, pretty much maintenance for the whole airport is worked into our operating budget, it would just be included in there, it's, it would be hard to pick out how much it would take for snow removal, it's hard to, percentage of that.
So you don't think there'll be any extra costs with having this AT hanger? Is that what I'm getting out of this?
We, we didn't, we did not, and, we did not add more to our operating budget for eight more hangars, we didn't do that. Normally, a new building, a new building that's, um, brand-new, doesn't have a whole lot of maintenance on it. However, snow removal is snow removal, um, so, so yes, there'll be a, there'll be a little bit more going around with snow removal, and, uh, um-
But less mowing.
How, how many total hangars are out there right now?
Uh, we have thirty-seven key hangars, we have eight bigger hangars.
Total forty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-six, I think, is what our thing is, yeah.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, okay.
Clint, I've got a question for you about the actual mill levy increase. It says sixty thousand for a period of ten-year, is that approved every year?
Yeah, I think so, I think that what, what really happens here is this, that this is just kind of like us, what I said before, um, if this would have been all bonded, bond council would have said, we need to have a commitment from the city council that we're gonna have, they're gonna, that the airport authority's gonna have the money to pay back these bonds. This is similar, that says, uh, I think this is a similar kind of commitment where if this resolution is passed, you're saying to the airport authority, we understand the financing mechanism that's in place, we understand that there's estimated to be sixty thousand dollars that's gonna be needed on an annual basis for the next ten years for debt repayment, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pledge to give you those monies to make those debt payments. That doesn't mean, though, that that's gonna be, ultimately gonna be rolled together with the annual review of the airport funding requests that you have, and that's the process that will actually set, the airport will every year come to you with a preliminary asking, and you'll respond to that and ultimately pass a resolution as part of the Nebraska Budget Act that says, this is the money that the airport authority has to, uh, to levy for the next year.
Would it be beneficial, getting back to, uh, Rob's point over here about rents, obviously, and cash flowing hanger, you know, your hanger cost, would it be beneficial to have this subject to review each year after you see rent increases, to see if you're actually picking up more of that sixty thousand per year? You know, if you approve it, but under, but it needs to be reviewed, so, so essentially, like, say, okay, you're, you're, you're approving the sixty thousand now in the mill levy, this year's mill levy, so next year when it comes to budget, and they come back and another ten thousand is coming out of rents, and that goes to fifty thousand instead of sixty thousand, is that a possibility so that it keeps us kind of, it keeps, it, I guess, we're getting it, getting back to what Rob is stating, it maybe puts a little more weight on the rents than maybe traditionally haven't been there in the past?
I think that this resolution talks about the understanding to work together to do that, I think that part of the dialogue that you have every summer when you're doing that is what's happened to rents, what's happened to rents in the area, what's happening in the economy, uh, what kind of revenue have you had, and, and you can make those mid-course corrections, if you will, every year for the next ten years, and I think the resolution, the way that it's written allows for you to do that.
Every, every, for every ten, every year?
Every year, every year.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Every year, they can look at their, I mean, they can look at their capital, they can look at their personnel, just like you do with every other division in the city.
So it'd be, it'd be subject to review and the budget approval?
Every year.
So there is potential, going back to Rob's point, Councilman Merrill's point, that if there is a substantial rent increase due to research, or, I don't know, I was looking at something just a minute ago that stated there's, regionally wise, it seems like we're kind of in line, but, uh, if there is rent increase-
Sure, any-
It would, it would affect the request for the sixty thousand.
Sure, I think your question is if additional revenues-
Yes.
-come into the airport authority, through whatever mechanism is available to them, whether it be increased taxes, or in this, in this case, increased rental fees, then that additional revenue can go forward to balance the budget and lower the tax requirement, it's just like any other, it's just like we balance our budgets in any other division, so yes.
It's, it's probably worth pointing out that if there's forty-six hangars out there, and the average increase is eight dollars a month, that's three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars a year, and that's not gonna buy you a lot.
No.
So.
But I think, getting back to the point you were making, there could be, there might be significant need for significant increase.
It'd be well above the eight dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the average lifespan of a hanger right now?
Well, we've got hangars that are fifty years old, or they're never good, and they've had very little maintenance.
The E-row is, was built in sixty-eight, was an addition in seventy-eight, excuse me, the E-row, the D-row was built in sixty-five, the C and L rows were in seventy-four, and then we added two corporate hangars in two thousand and ten.
I guess one of the questions I have is if you do have a citizen or corporation come out and want to build their own hanger, um, how do you set the rental fee for the land? The lease?
We have, we just raised that, we have a, a land, a land lease rate per square foot.
So you could actually have a potential of, if you wanted to, if two or three people came to you and wanted to build bigger hangars, you'd set them off to a side, off the same T-run you're using now, or would be developing now, um, so you'd have, you could have a chance there to increase your revenue that way also, and that would pay down the levy faster. Am I correct on that, Clint?
Yes.
So instead of ten years, you could possibly short it up.
What, what's the drop dead date for making application for these grants?
February ninth is the FAA one, the FAA levy.
And the other one?
Well, we have to have them together.
I guess you get, you would have to do them both together, okay.
The one shot, the FAA won't give us money, build a taxiway to nowhere.
And, uh, so that paperwork's all ready to go? All you gotta do is send it in?
Well, pretty, pretty much, so, also, uh, or, Aeronautics and Lincoln does most of that paperwork, and I will probably get, they gotta have a few days.
I'm not asking-
February the ninth, you said, I'm sorry. First Monday in February, second Monday in February.
Well, it has, it has to be in by then. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty well on our minds. If you say yes tonight, it goes. If you say no, it's over. So we can't, we can't go past tonight. I mean, we did everything, we did everything in our meeting last Monday night to, to approve whatever you say. So we can, we can go without a meeting and, and send all the paperwork in. So this is, this is pretty well, yeah. And I actually thought we were on the agenda two weeks ago. So I, but I found out that was just an information night rather than an ordinance night. So that's why we're back here again.
I'm saying nothing until you all raise your hand and tell me to go forward. So. Okay. All right. Great discussion. Thanks you all for being here. So-
Anyone who has any questions about the airport, wants to go out there and tour, you can call me, call over to Life Net or call the airport. They can get hold of you. Be happy to take anybody out to come and tour, show them. Heck, I'll take them for an airplane ride.
Thanks, Bill. All right. With that being said then, let's vote.
Voting in favor of the resolution, Councilman, I can't hardly see that, Langy, Clausen, Moaning, Faust. Voting against the resolution, Councilman Granquist, Merrill, Muran, and File.
So it's my turn?
It is a tie.
Thank you, Beth. Yeah, no kidding. I voted.
Mayor Pukeman votes in the affirmative. Resolution is adopted.
Okay. Great conversation. Great, great questions. I think, again, like I say, we'll see you more here. Just keep us updated and informed of what's happening out there, and we're here to work with you. There's a lot of good questions that came about, you know, and I sit here and think, not only as you look at what other regional airports do or whatever, I, I think one of the questions that I would ask you to ask would be, what percentage is it that is funded by the tax dollars to take care of those rental hangars? Because I think that's one of the things that's been very concerning. And while I certainly have been told, we have one of the hangars out there that's filled by a friend of ours, and they have been coming and going to the city of Norfolk, oh, probably started eight years ago. And the improvements they've seen, they are now residents here and have a permanent hangar here. But the improvements have certainly been received by them very well. They're seeing huge, they just feel that there's more interest in what's going on out there. And so I applaud you for that. Let's keep on that track, though, and work together. So appreciate all the time you've put into this. But again, I think we can further answer some of the questions and the concerns of some of this council. So that's up to you. We're willing to work with you and be a part of it. I do know, Terry, Shane and I took time and went out, and Terry did take us through all the hangars out there. Again, I probably know more than I ever dreamed I would need to know, but it's, it's, it's all good. So thanks. Okay. Administrative report, December sales tax report. Who is doing this for us? Randy?
Yes, I can do that. This is the type of item that used to go into the Friday memo, but since we're not doing Friday memos anymore, we're including them as administrative reports on the council agenda. And I believe the intention is that not necessarily to talk about these every time because they're kind of recurring items that you'll see every month on the memo. We weren't talking about them. But glad to say the sales tax is up good, as it has been pretty much all this year. And I think that's primarily due to the hailstorm we had in June. Good for the economy, I guess. You get a lot of people into town, a lot of materials get sold, but not really exactly how you want your economy to grow is, is through hailstorms, although they've been coming about every other year basis. I don't think we can count on that going forward. But we are up about thirteen percent this year compared to last year with our sales tax. But I said, I think that's, I'm not going to say a one-time thing because we seem to be in hailstorms like that too regular, but I hope an infrequent type thing that we won't have every year.
Yeah, me too.
Randy, we were, the prior year over, how much?
We're up, year-to-date, we're up thirteen percent over the prior year, and this month was about nine percent over the prior month.
So twelve, and twelve, thirteen was higher than twelve by what percent? Do you recall?
Oh.
If you don't have it on the top of your head, don't worry about it.
Yeah, thirteen was higher than twelve by... Thirteen is actually lower than twelve. Fourteen was higher than thirteen. The reason thirteen was down, though, I believe was because of that big refund we had.
Right.
Yeah.
When that, that would have been a-
Trending well.
Yes. It's, if you look at long-term, our, our sales tax has been growing a little over two percent a year.
You say we're trending better than what you anticipated?
Right now, we're trending much better than what we anticipated. I don't know how much of that for sure is due to the hailstorm. I expect, if you took the hailstorm out of it, we'd probably be back close to the long-term.
Just say bi-local, so I guess.
Bi-local.
Yeah, there you go.
That does it, right? Appreciate that, Randy. And as well, Kino is looking good too, right? So.
Beth can probably tell you more about that than I can, because she put these numbers together, but I could talk about it also.
Well, and again, the point is, it's there for our review. And if there are any questions, certainly the council can ask. They know where to go. But to me, it looks positive. So anything- All right. I see nothing else to be talked of, so let's adjourn.
One quick thing. Sorry.
No, I should ask for everybody to raise-
Nobody raise their hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Recently, if you've noticed in different media outlets, and it's been kind of out there, and I've been questioned about the study, I guess the term study for the bridge on Norfolk Avenue. And I think sometimes we, and it's, you know, it's a study for fifty-five thousand, and I guess when you're, even myself, when you hear that, you think, you know, I could go look at this bridge, come back and tell you, hey, that bridge is in bad shape, pay me fifty-five thousand. That's what it feels like. So I think sometimes we use that term study. It's kind of a lazy term, you know, because it encompasses everything we want to do. It just doesn't state what we're trying to do. You know, basically, these bridges are reviewed, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, every two years. And during that process, the bridge was reviewed and was found to be structurally obsolete and basically, structurally okay, but it's obsolete structurally and needs to be upgraded. It's not going to last long term. So in that process, that we started the, you know, the question was asked, and we had, we had a subcommittee formed, and we reviewed the process, and hired, and looked at an engineering firm to come forward and, and conduct this process. But I guess, to me, it's more of a pre-engineering study at this point. You know, they're going to look at, do a hydraulic study and look at the, you know, erosion control. And also, you'll have traffic studies done. You'll have how the traffic flows and what, what kind of need we're going to have with this is also going to be established as far as four-lane pedestrian path on either side, you know, what, what that's going to encompass. And you got to look also at what's the future going to hold? Is there going to be a bike trail? So in the meantime, this fifty-five thousand is going to encompass quite a big picture. It's basically going to put us to the point then where it comes back to the council and then the subcommittee, and it's decide on what type of bridge will be built. So I think that needs to be out there. It's, it's pre-engineering at this point. We call it a study, but I don't know if that's moving forward. I wish we'd kind of just take that term and just kind of roll it up and throw it away and just kind of explain what we're doing.
I, you know, I, you're saying exactly what I hope the message was that Diane put out there on the website for us. She did an excellent job, I thought, of explaining it. And I encourage any and all of our citizens to be well aware of the efforts of our now full-time person that is trying very hard to give those kind of explanations to you. So get on that website and stay up to date with those. But you're absolutely right, Councilman. And again, I applaud you for trying to remind everybody of and what it, what it is that we're attempting to do. But take a look at that website and look at the very good articles that seem to leave out all those, you know, those conversational words that our legal uses next to us, that notwithstanding and all that stuff. She just spills it like it is. So I appreciate that effort. Anything else before we adjourn for the evening? Let's adjourn.